My clock says six thirty and I can see that we have a quorum, so I will call the city council, city of Hillsborough, our meeting to order. We have first up approval of minutes from our eleven two twenty twenty one meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Garing moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries four oh. We now have approval of vouchers tonight. We're light on vouchers. That's not a bad thing. Ten thousand eight hundred and seventy eight dollars and seventy eight cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers?
Yeah, so what is the eighty one thousand three thirty four thirty seven then at the end?
Okay, Mr. Styles. Danielle.
Open payments. Those are probably things we've improved previously.
Okay.
It appears I mistakenly sent Matt the wrong total number. So the ten thousand would be the manual checks.
Okay.
In addition, the eighty one thousand dollars council checks.
Eighty one thousand.
Three thirty four.
Excuse me?
Three thirty four thirty seven.
Three thirty four thirty seven. Do we have a total approval?
Accurate total is ninety two, two, one, three, fifteen.
Okay. No problem. Okay, just so we know we're approving. Questions? Any other questions regarding the vouchers? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the vouchers for payment.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Sure.
McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are now at our first public comment section. I don't see anybody but the press on the line.
Okay.
Okay. Moving to the business section of our agenda. Up first is our water purchase contract. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a, we revisit this. We actually started talking about this. We reviewed a draft in August of the agreement with KWO, the Kansas Water Office. At that time, we sort of talked about how the process of negotiating goes with them. It's not really a negotiation considering they control the water. And we don't effectively have a secondary option. The groundwater here is insufficient, sufficiently potable for that. So what, this, this is what kind of came out of it, and this is actually exactly, almost exactly what we talked about back in August. They did approve our three hundred million gallons per year, which is what we requested. Or as part of kind of a consensus is what we requested, which is what we had in our previous contract. So how that works is you'd have to pay for half, which is what we do now. You have to pay for half that allocation, and then there's a carrying cost to the other half, which is based on the municipal investment pool. It's a rate that they get charged. It's a pretty minimal amount, but we would get charged with that. And then after six years and each subsequent year after that, the director for the Kansas Water Office can review this contract. They may or may not make a determination on whether or not we need to keep our three hundred million gallon allocation. But at least for the first six years, we have that. Generally speaking, I don't think that they do too much revision unless there are a lot of other people waiting in line to get water rights out of Marion Reservoirs. So right now, anyway, Marion Reservoir is one of the least least pledged sources of surface water in the state and the, in the water office group of reservoirs and areas that they control. So I think that this is probably the best we can possibly get from them. The big hook with this, as we talked about in August, is that the raw water rate will go from fifteen cents a thousand gallons to the market rate, which changes every year. And for next year, it'll be forty five point four, forty five and a half cents basically per thousand gallons, which is a pretty significant increase. And we'll talk about water rates here in a minute. But that's, that's kind of how that works. And that, that they've gone away from these kind of set contracts, which is what we were living off of since the previous contract was approved forty years ago. It's still a forty year contract, but now they have the ability to change those rates every year. You know, I think that we're probably in the, in the best position we could be with it, considering everything that they could have done with it. So we're recommending approval of this contract, and it will go to the Kansas Water Authority on Friday. Actually, there's a meeting on Friday where they'll talk about it. So if there are any changes, we can, we can put those in, but I'm not recommending anything change on it. It's pretty much the same draft we've seen.
Any questions? I think this topic is going to continue to come up in the future as we participated in the league meeting up in Topeka a month or so ago. Water scarcity in western Kansas is a real problem for some communities. The community of A's is looking at building a pipeline approximately fifty, sixty mile long pipeline to bring water to A's. That's impacting their ability to grow as a city because they don't have the water resources that they need. What was the other, some of the other cities? Was it Garden City or?
Yeah, well, everybody out west, Garden City's got a, a new approach that they're trying to as well. Bringing in kind of a, almost like a regional district approach.
But just, you know, I'm not saying that for any other reason other than, you know, this is something we haven't really had to deal with for forty years. I'm guessing that we're gonna be talking about it sooner than forty years from now, so. Any other questions or comments regarding this contract? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the contract as submitted and authorize the mayor to sign.
So moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second? Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Now municipal policy statement ninety five regarding public comment consent agendas and item consideration process. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the second piece, the second step of our proposed two-step process. So this actually is just put into the form that we talked about at the last meeting about public comments. It didn't make any changes. Didn't hear any comments from anybody that they wanted anything, but we can still obviously do that. And also included the language about consent agendas and kind of how that works, and then the two-step process for considering items, larger items. So this is exactly what we talked about last time. As I said, there weren't any changes from what we previously looked at based on comments. So we're recommending an approval for policy statement ninety five.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for the council to approve municipal policy statement ninety five regarding public comment consent agendas and item consideration process.
I'm making a motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
I got.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now to Willow Glen culvert repair. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I don't know if you all are aware of kind of situation in Willow Glen. There's a culvert that runs from their drainage pond to the other side of the street, and then it runs into the field there and carries the water out from, from all the runoff in Willow Glen. Right now, there's a twenty-four by thirty-six squash culvert. It's basically just a kind of like a square box that runs the entire length. It's not really sufficiently sized for, for that area. And I, you know, I can't say why is, why it was sized the way it was back when it was put in. But it, it's been causing some issues because of the drainage through there. It's been eroding around the pipe, and so it's tunneling around the sides of the pipe and then eroding around the roadway. So obviously, we don't want indigo or ash street or whichever street you want to identify it as at that point. We don't want that to collapse, which is a potential hazard here if we continue to let it go. One of the other things that is impacting this is the floodplain mapping, which has been working for the last, I think, five years or three, three and a half years. They're, they're adding some of the area to the floodplain. I put the, the, it's not a firm map yet, but you can kind of see where that impacts on that. That's the, the one from Wood. They've had a few revisions to this. Originally, that the line that's the furthest west there was where the new floodplain was gonna go. They've had some letters of map revision, which pulls some of those properties, especially the houses, out of the floodplain. And so they've gone back and revised that, but this area is obviously prone to, to water, high water levels. And so this repair that we're talking about doing, not only does it repair the issue with the erosion around the pipe, but it also puts in some new pipes. So again, we're talking about putting in a thirty inch round culvert as well as an eighteen inch culvert, so actually end up with a little bit more drainage going through there. And so what Dale Donkey or street superintendent is proposing to do is have Middle Creek come out and bore that for us so that we don't have to shut down the road and open cut it. And then he would insert a new culvert in there and then pump concrete around it to seal it off and make sure that we don't have an erosion go through there. So that's, that's the plan. That's what Dale's been wanting to do this project for a little while. And we've kind of held off on it, wanting to see what would happen with the floodplain mapping and if this would actually make a difference. Turns out it will, but it maybe isn't as impactful to the property owners as it maybe we thought it would be originally. So the, the work here associated with it is they, they're saying roughly about twenty thousand, twenty thousand for the, the boring and everything, and it's important for us to get, what we're asking for is to approve the boring at this point because it's important for us to get on their work schedule. They're about oh, three months out. And so we're at the point now where we kind of need to, to get on there so that we're ready for next year. This is a twenty twenty-two project. When it's all said and done, I think we're gonna be closer to thirty thousand. Dale's kind of having to estimate some of that work. And, you know, the availability of pipe and everything else, it's hard to determine where, where we're gonna be when it's actually time to buy that pipe and put it down. But that's, we're, we're thinking about thirty thousand. So what we're asking for is approval to secure a spot on Middle Creek's schedule from the twenty twenty-two budget to complete this project.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Is, is the project entirely within the city limits?
Well, the road is technically ours, and so yes, it is. The west side of the street is ours, and the road maintenance falls to us. So.
Where does our maintenance end?
On the other side of the street, right away from, on the east side of the street.
No, I'm talking about to the south.
Oh, to the south. Well, go to the city boundary, which is just south of this area here. So this one is just in our boundary. But we're, we're within our legal authority in order to do this project. We feel pretty comfortable with that.
No connecting link.
I don't think we're gonna get any county, county help on this one. It's, given that it's a culvert issue, they're not really gonna be very helpful on the drainage piece, but I don't believe, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve or authorize the, the securing a spot on Middle Creek's schedule for twenty twenty-two to complete the Willow Glen culvert bore. Will we, will there be further action required?
Once it gets a little closer to it, we'll have to do a full, formal approval of some of the other costs associated with this.
Okay. So at this point, we're not approving any expenditure. We're just approving the project. Okay. Would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
I got.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now at consideration of job descriptions for police department. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So I've got a couple of job descriptions, three job descriptions here that we would ask for approval on. We've updated the assistant chief, the sergeant's position, which has been unfilled for the last several years, and then also the police officer's position. Chief Hubert's game plan for this is to fill internally the assistant chief and sergeant's position. And so Randy Brazel would be the assistant chief in this case, and then John Hubert would move up into the sergeant's position. It would give John a little bit more responsibility and, and shape his role a little bit more so that he can be prepped for future leadership opportunities, which is one of the things we were excited about having him in. And then also, we updated the police officer, which is where we would look to be hiring somebody. We've actually got a description out there or a recruitment out there for that, using the old job description, but we'll just slide this one in if it's approved. As of right now, we're having, I don't believe we've got any, well, we think we have one application in. Very difficult to hire police officers in, in a normal time. And so when we're talking about the current situation with trying to find help, it gets a little bit more challenging. So we're actively recruiting a few people who we know about, and that's kind of how we've approached it. Of course, anybody is also interested can, can apply as well. So that's, that's what we're asking for here today is to approve these job descriptions, and then we'll move forward from there.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for authorizing or approving the new job descriptions and the and are we approving pay raises as well or just, just the job descriptions?
Job descriptions.
Okay. So would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Items are, we have Alcon invoices totaling one hundred eighty-one thirty-five. Mr. Styles.
Okay, so we have two Alcon invoices today. They're all for parts. And we've got some for the water department, airport, and then we also have electrical department stuff. So these are all just things that we picked up for normal, normal operations.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the Alcon invoices for payment.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
All those opposed. Motion is approved. Alcon invoices are approved for payment. Now we're items for future consideration. Mr. Styles.
Okay, so first one up is a proposed water rate increase, and we've been kind of talking about this for the past six months. And a lot of it is rooted in a couple, well, there's two things that are really driving the need to look at the water rate. The water contract, which we just talked about, that increases the raw water rate at a, a rate of about thirty, thirty, thirty cents a gallon roughly right now, but of course, that will be going up every year as they move that average or move that cost up. So that's the first thing. We know that's kind of a fixed, a fixed variable, if you will. So we know that that's something that we're gonna be subjected to. The other thing is the blue-green algae problem that occurs, unfortunately, occurs during our peak production periods. This year, it was really rough. It was, you know, almost four months during the summer. We were having to deal with this, and it increases our, increased our cost by a pretty significant amount, a dollar eighty-four during that time. And so we have to, we have to kind of think about how we're gonna look at that as the future now. It, it could be that this last year was, was an outlier year because it is the first time that we've had to deal with it for that long of a period. However, I don't know that I've seen anything from, either the Corps of Engineers, or the Kansas Department of Health and Environment, or any of the water authorities in the state that would lead me to believe that they're gonna do anything about the blue-green algae problem. And so I, I think we're probably better off thinking about it in terms of we're gonna have to deal with this again next year and in probably the same fashion. So what we did was I took, I took a look at our five-year average and kind of how, how we've consumed water, and it's a pretty normal curve. It's, it's exactly what I expected to see, you know, in the, in the winter time, you don't do as much. And it ramps up in the summertime as people start consuming more, and you have people doing pools, you have people irrigating. You know, everything kind of spikes up in the, in those months, and then, you know, it starts to taper back down in December, and then, you know, bottoms out again in, in the, or late, or into the winter months. And that's one of the reasons why we do a winter average on sewer consumption, because we figured that those are your, probably your least, least used months, and so those are the months that we average your sewer bill on. But as far as averaging goes, you know, when we look at the last five years, that yellow bar there is, is represents the time that we had to treat blue-green algae, and so we had expanded costs, which unfortunately lands at our peak time. And so what we did there is looked at how much it costs to do that. And there's not a real, I don't know of a good way to do, you know, basically flux pricing on that, where you'd have surge pricing for, for water. It's not really something that happens. So what we did was we took that dollar eighty-four and we flattened it out and put it on there for what that would look like over an entire year, which ended up being eighty-three cents a gallon. So if you take that and add it to the thirty cents per thousand gallon that we know we're gonna have to cost with the new raw water cost, that ends up at a dollar and thirteen cents per thousand gallon. Right now, our rate is four dollars and ninety-two per thousand gallon, and there's a twenty-nine dollar flat monthly fee that everybody pays if you're connected to the system. So what that dollar thirteen represents is a twenty-three percent increase on the consumption side, which is, it's, that's pretty significant. I mean, it's pretty significant. We've looked at a lot of different ways to, to do that. We, you know, we, we feel like operations are pretty, pretty dialed in right now. In fact, we probably could use a little bit more for capital improvements, thinking about long-term things. But, you know, wanting to keep this as, as manageable as possible rate for people, we, we looked at that and said, okay, well, that's probably something that, this, this is probably what we need to make it through. The last time we looked at rates was two thousand fourteen, so we've, we've waited seven years in order to make an adjustment to that, which honestly is probably too far. I think ideally, you'd wanna look at maybe putting in some kind of automatic inflationary number, or it goes up automatically every year, just to, to keep up with the inflationary costs with it. But, you know, I know that's probably not a popular thing to put out there either. So one of the things we did was looked at the, the modeling and, and looked at how it would impact our users. So we looked at a single person. The average there, give or take, is about twenty-two hundred gallons a month. So for that person, I call this the, the single elderly person kind of rate. This is always what everybody thinks about, the little old lady rate, I guess. Not to be stereotypical, but that's kind of where people think, who's, how's this kind of affect them? Two forty-nine a month, it's about thirty dollars a year for that person typically. We looked at a typical five family, five-family household that doesn't do any lawn irrigation. That's about fifty-seven hundred gallons per month. They would look at six forty-four, and then be about seventy-seven dollars a year based on this water rate increase. We looked at our commercial accounts, too. I pulled some of our stuff. I didn't have it ready for the report. Tabor's by far our biggest commercial user for water. They actually have sixty accounts. That's, covers all their properties and all the connections. Not all of those have water. Not all of those are, you know, then some of those are just irrigation wells, some are just electric. There's a lot of different accounts, though. So we went back and looked at kind of a nine-month average for them, and I pulled their three biggest users out. The men's dorms was the, was one of the bigger users. Theirs would be about a hundred and forty-five dollar increase a month. So somewhere around seventeen hundred a year for that. The women's dorms was about two hundred and nine dollars a month or twenty-five hundred a year. The gym, gym slash student union, which is kind of where, is where the cafeteria is. They use the most. That's their biggest account, biggest single account, was two hundred and seventy-two dollars a month. So a little over thirty-two hundred dollars a year would be their impact. And so if you start adding it up over, over the, the totality of their accounts, it ends up being a fairly, I mean, it's a fairly significant dollar amount for them when you start talking about it there. But, but they are by far the biggest user. I pulled the school districts because they, they're gonna be one that obviously you wanna think about. Fortunately for them, when you look at kind of how their consumption pattern works, you know, they're not, they're not big summer users. They're, they basically get three months off where they're not using much. So for the middle, they have fifteen total accounts, again, so sort of the same thing. Some of them aren't all water. We just looked at the middle school, high school. Theirs, based on how they've been using water, would be about seventy-four dollars a month, eighty-eight, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars a year. And the elementary school would be about forty-five dollars a month or five hundred and forty a year. So their, their impact isn't super heavy. They don't have overnight residential. They don't, you know, they're not doing laundry necessarily. We also looked at the hospital, because I knew that would be one that we had some interest in. Based on what their usage is for the last year, they pay about four hundred and twenty dollars more a year. And then probably the biggest commercial customer we have that's not Tabor would be Barkman Honey, and they were a little under two thousand dollars a year with this proposed increase. So that's kind of how it impacts people. That's kind of how we're looking at it. So those are, those are kind of the facts as we see them. Of course, this is a two stepper, so what's, you know, what's your pleasure on this? What do we want, what do you want us to look at? Are there things you wanna take a different, different approach? We're, we're open to that discussion.
How many days do we have in the water fund?
How many days available cash? Um, last I knew, we were close to about forty-five days.
And what's our goal? Ninety? About half of where we need to be? Okay.
The, the jumps out at me is, and you know, I think we saw the increase coming from the water, raw water cost, but that's only a fourth of what we're seeing here.
Right.
That most of it's the blue-green algae problem.
Yeah, well, and you know, again, it, it comes down to, is it gonna be a, a three-week problem or a three-month problem?
Right.
And, you know, last year, or this year, it's been a three-month problem, so.
It has been though consistently for a number of years now.
Well, no, this is, this has been the first year where it's been this long. We know we're gonna have the problem every year.
Okay.
But this is the longest, like, continuous stretch we've had. And I think it, you know, has to do with continued conditions at the reservoir. I mean, they've, they've, the people who have the authority over that, which it's not us, haven't really taken any action to, to stem that problem.
So maybe I'm a little bit confused. On, on the other years, that there wasn't a three-month problem.
Wasn't a three-month problem. It would be, you know, a month-long problem.
Right. So this, but this eighty-three cents is more based on three-month problem?
Yeah, it's based on this, this last year. Mostly because we don't really have any indication that it's gonna get better.
We're talking about, if I heard you correctly, looking at this every year going forward.
Probably so, yeah. At least on the raw water side, there's always, you know, they've always factored in, at least according to that, you know, their statistics and kind of how they've approached it. When I say they, the Kansas Water Office, three percent is basically what they've been seeing every year on average. But that just impacts that raw water rate, so.
I, I understand that, but, but at the same time, you know, we're sitting here dealing with these extra, extra costs that, that we know we've got. We also know our fund balance isn't where it belongs. And, you know, for the future of the, of our water distribution system, you know, one of the goals that we have as a, as, as a city, one of our strategic goals that we've agreed to is to ensure that we get our fund balances up where they belong. And I'm a little hesitant to be running thin to win, especially in this economic climate right now, knowing the inflationary pressures that, that we're gonna be under going forward, at least for the next year or two, anyway. What, I don't have a crystal ball, but that's, that's my ex- What, I don't have a crystal ball, but that's, uh, that's my expectation. That, uh, that we would, we would be, uh. It's, it's hard not to address it. I mean, we knew it was coming and, you know, there's just no easy way to, uh. No easy way to soften the blow, I guess. Unless somebody else has got a. Good idea on how the, how you manipulate the numbers to make it different.
So one, just to interject if I could there, you, what we have right now is this one rate. We have one. Kind of a flat rate. It's very simple to figure out, but. Uh, a lot of places they go to what's called conservation tier. So. You know, they would have a lower rate for lower users and as you go up, it gets higher. Uh, that's, that's a, that's a potential option. Um, you could, you could split the rates out and say, here's a residential rate, here's a commercial rate. Um, you just kind of complicates things a little bit more and I don't know that, you know, the rain's gonna fall on everyone at some point. It's just, you know, if there's a favored way to do it, I don't know. I mean. You wanna be more fair to residents or businesses, basically, if you kind of go down that road.
I kinda like the flat rate.
I keep it simple.
Keep it simple. Don't feel like we need to penalize people who are helping create jobs and things like that at the same time. I also think that it, you know, as we look towards the future, it may be that we wanna start thinking about. How we participate in this idea of water conservation. And, uh, you know, and I know we're gonna be talking about building codes and some of that stuff, but you know, there's, there's some things that we could. You know, low, low, uh, water landscaping and things of that nature that we can encourage. And some things like that, that some programs that we might look at in the future that would help people. Reduce their, their amount of water that they're using. You know, maybe, uh, I know that, that, uh, there's a KPP has a, uh, has a rebate for, uh, energy efficient. Uh, appliances, for example. Well, there's also water efficient plumbing. Fixtures and things of that nature that might be, we might be able to encourage people. It's just something to be thinking about in turn, because as I said before. This idea of water being just there whenever we need it, you know? Fifty, a hundred years from now, we don't know what it's gonna look like, so. Wouldn't hurt us to, to think about starting to find ways to be more water efficient. You know, we all think about energy efficiencies, right? That's, that's pretty top of mind, but I don't think we think about water efficiencies in the same way and maybe we need to.
That's a little bit different because it is a renewable resource. The sense that water goes through a cycle and it's always raining and it's always running through a system all the time, so. It's a little bit different than I think energy use, except for we have none, you know, if you have renewable energy too. But yes, the more people there are, the more load that puts on the system, no matter what, because it's the delivery and the, and cleaning the water.
And I get, I get the, the renewable part, but they, the underground aquifers and stuff that are depleted, that's not being.
That's not being renewed as fast as being pulled out of the ground, right?
Right, right. And that's, I guess, where my head's at just a little bit.
Yeah.
You know, seeing as we are an agricultural.
Right.
Community and we do, uh, we do have people that use the underground wa- water to irrigate their.
Has that aquifer gone down in this area?
I, I don't know that. I don't know that, but.
I know it has out west, so, but I don't know what it's done here.
But, uh, I'm just saying, you know, that just seems to me that there are, the technologies, you know, is, is, is. Improving in those areas as well.
Right.
You know, we ought to, we ought to be encouraging of, of things like that. Just my thought.
There's some innovative ways coming down the road too for purifying water, but. Hopefully that'll help.
Yeah.
You know, it's, eh, eh, in, in, uh, this, I don't wanna get sidetracked, but you know. My wife's family's out in California involved in ag and water is a very significant issue out there. But, uh, you know, you, you sit there with a state that's, uh, butted up against the Pacific Ocean and you think about. Desalination and things like that, you know, and.
Yeah.
You know, that isn't an option for us. We don't have an ocean.
No.
You know, to, uh, to desalinate water from, you know, we have to de-algae our water. You don't have to desalinate.
Algae it.
Yeah.
Algae it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding this topic? Any direction that, uh, you would care to give, uh? We've heard that, uh, from Councilman Lowen and, and, uh, I don't know if you were concurring or not, that. That, uh, that a single rate would be preferable flat rate. Is that the consensus at the council at this point?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So does that help you, uh, as we move forward?
Yeah. Is there, I mean, is there any other thought process there? I mean, you wanna?
Uh, it's not fun to think about because you know that inflation is gonna hit it all, everything and that's part of it. And then the water price goes up and then. It raises prices, no cones, can I use a lot of water?
That's gonna be pretty negative part of it, but I mean, there are always things. There's always a little bits to it.
Always just a little bits to it everywhere that come back around and hit everybody, so.
Yeah, we went, this is a great problem before, uh. A lot of business people would rather pay a little bit. Raise it a little bit at a time than get stuck with a whole bunch of stuff at one time. It's something to keep in mind. I mean, that's what they told me the one thought.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think with this yearly rate change is gonna make that happen more than this big step that we just experienced now. Cause of a forty year contract that ran out.
I think that would be a good idea, so.
You mentioned like doing kind of a three percent or something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yearly increase.
Hmm.
Is that something you try to work in now? Or is that something you just every year and you know you need to review it and you're trying to review it?
Yeah, uh, it's really a matter of policy and how you wanna look at it. Um, I, I know there are systems who. Automatically do it. They have it set up to every, you know, January one, it goes up. You know, a set percentage rate. Sometimes they tie it to, uh, consumer price index, but I don't really think that's a fair way to do it. Uh, cause of consumer price index is based on things that water systems don't buy. Um, but yeah, there, there's, there's way you can automatically do it and that kind of takes the decision-making process out of it or. You can just set it on the calendar and say every November, we need to talk about water rates because we know we're gonna get a different rate. Uh, or even before that. So I really kind of is a, a preference of the council, how you'd wanna do that. Um, you know, from, from an administrative standpoint, so it's, you know, automatic is, is probably the. The preferred choice, just because we know it's gonna happen. Um, but. You know, it's, it's again, completely up to the council.
Any, anything else?
Well, so do you need, you need kind of guidance on that, how you write it in?
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, if that's something we wanna address right now, then yeah, um, with this, this rate, um. We can always just handle it as this rate or, and then wait to do that the next year, or we can, you can do it all at once if you want to. It's up to, up to the council.
I'd probably prefer to just do this and know that we review it once a year. Just in case there's different, I mean, the, the dealing with blue green algae could go way down or it could go way up. And that's driving this more than anything.
Yeah, I agree. I think we should look, we should look at it every year.
Councilman McCarty?
That's good to me.
Awesome. Thanks, Phil.
Okay.
Yeah. Too unpredictable to.
I'm just always a little nervous when we just create automatic increases and, you know. That's about as, that's about as problematic as not addressing it at all either, you know, potentially down the road. So. You know, I think, uh, I think we've been elected to do a job and, and to, uh, to, uh, make decisions about these things and. And, uh, we need to keep that as, as, as open and transparent as we can. And I think it loses some transparency when it becomes automatic. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to, uh, items for future consideration, item two, which is our twenty twenty one building code update, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So we started this process at the last meeting, um, and we've kind of had an opportunity to dig a little deeper. Uh, and Chief Stacky, our building inspector Stacky, code enforcement Stacky. Is here to kind of talk a little bit about some of the things that we've brought up in this, uh, that we, you know, would like a little bit more guidance on. Um, storm shelters is one, and then of course the conservation code, we heard pretty loud and clearly don't wanna do the conservation cuts, the green building code portion of it. Uh, we would wanna strip that out. Uh, the fire code and, and the radio reception for first responders and I know Ben will talk about that. Um, the existing building code things, um, again, the residential code with the energy efficiency language. And then with the plumbing and mechanical, we ask property mains, we're just gonna recommend, uh, going that and approving those, cause actually less restrictive, but. I would defer to Ben if you wanna talk about some of those specific issues.
I think we're gonna hold off on the property maintenance at this time, um, because we haven't had a chance to really research that as much as we might do. Also, I don't have information on the NEC, the National Electro Code. Um, Jonah Garing was good enough to share with me his insights into that, but I still don't have a copy of the book. Um. Uh, NFPA isn't as quick to get me those as, uh, ICC. So. Yeah, I don't have that copy and so we'll be looking at that a little bit more in depth, but what I did is I went through. Just, did anybody get a copy of this?
Yeah.
So I went through and, uh, these are the key issues that I think are gonna affect us in Hillsborough. There are lots and lots of changes. I've read some of the books, um, you know, and some of those books are just on the changes, but I went through those and. Gleaned out the ones that I think are gonna affect Hillsborough the most. You know, I don't think that the, the code changes on inspecting balconies is gonna really affect us a whole lot. So, um, anyway, so that, this, what I come up with is this, this thing about the storm shelters. Now, that, that code language entered into the code in the twenty fifteen edition. Which is the next code cycle from the one that we have now, twenty twelve. And so this, the, the storm shelters isn't new to this code. What's new to this code is that we have to conform with ICC five hundred. And ICC five hundred is where we find the language about, um, what I think is a, a reasonable, uh, um. Requirement of the code for a peer review. Um, you have to hire a design professional to design your storm shelter to conform with the other requirements of ICC five hundred. Um, but then you have to hire a separate architect to review that architect's work. And then you have this back and forth, you know, one, one architect will say, well, you didn't do this right, and you go there, and it becomes. Kind of a tug of war. It, that's what I've been advised by some contractors that have gone through this. It becomes kind of a tug of war between the architects and then of course. They don't pull on that rope for free. And so that really increases the cost of the design portion of the project. So if we were to adopt the building code, um, I would recommend that we adopt out. That section for peer review requirement out of ICC five hundred. That's my recommendation. And council can help out here. I don't know. There's a, there's a way that has to be done properly.
Yeah, when, when, when the ordinance comes, you know, when we drafted to adopt the, the standard code. We'll just, every one of these things that you either wanna delete or make some alteration to, just get listed out. So.
Or means.
In the ordinance, we adopt the code with the exception of A, B, C, D, E, F, G, blah, blah, blah. So, yeah.
So that's a doable thing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh, so that was, that was my, you know, the other language in ICC five hundred, um. You would expect a storm shelter to be of some robust construction. And there's language in there that supports that robust construction. Um, the other part of this is, in the building code. Um, it requires a storm shelter for every new building that is in. Our area, we're in a particular, I've got a, a map here that just kind of shows the country, that darkest area. That's the two hundred and fifty mile per hour wind zone. And anything that's built in that zone is what has to conform to this requirement for the code to have a storm shelter in. Any new building that is a police EMS fire station or, uh, nine one one dispatch center. Or a public school. That, and so any new altered, enlarged, change of occupancy. Anything like that that happens to any of those types of buildings, then has to incorporate this storm shelter. So I emailed Max Heinrichs and, and suggested that if he had some input into this, he should come to this meeting and I never got a response, so. Um, so I'm not sure where he stands on that, but I mean, it, it would definitely impact, um, schools.
How about the old hospital building? That's something that we own as a city, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if we had someone wanted to purchase that and use it for. All kinds of people coming through there.
Right.
And we, we, they have to, they have to build a.
No, because it wouldn't be a police, fire, EMS, or nine one one dispatch center, or a public school, K through twelve.
Okay, so it only covers those areas.
Right, unless, there's one other, if you wanna call it a community storm shelter. If it's a community storm shelter, now it has to move on these.
Of course, that building does have a basement, so.
Right.
So that's.
Whether that basement meets the.
Well, I, I understand.
That's, that's my question. See, if it, if it changes ownership, that's part of the reason they have to.
Right.
If it changes ownership to one of those listed, uh, critical buildings that are a category five. Building.
So do these structures have to be, uh, have to be attached to the building itself?
Not necessarily. Um, they can be either attached, they can either be inside the building or outside the building, but they still need to have, have to meet all the criteria.
So obviously you can probably guess where my, where, where my head's going with this. I mean, you know, we haven't adopted this code, so it doesn't exist in the code we're operating under today.
Correct.
So we've built, we're building the new EMS station, so it does not.
It's not required for that.
But we are going to be building our own facilities up there.
It would be required for that.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking as we think about that, we ought to have something where they, that would be available to the. To the EMS group as well.
For our emergency center. Yeah, cause police is included in that as well.
Right.
And so if we built a storm shelter that was approved.
I mean, that really doesn't have anything to do with the code other than it's something I think we need to, you need to put in your, in your, uh, in your. In your notes that we need, will need to address in the future.
Right.
If we adopt this.
Right.
This code.
And if, and it may be prudent to make it a community storm shelter.
I'm wondering if it wouldn't be, if that wouldn't be something to look at.
Obviously increase the cost, but.
Well. Again, you know, we've, uh, we've, we've, uh, you know, eh, there's really not, nothing. That, that we can go to the county right now and say, hey, you need to add this.
Well, no, it's, it's not required.
Right.
Cause they, they pulled their permit under the.
No, I get it. I understand that. But you know, if, if we think, if we're, if we're saying that we believe that it's a good idea to adopt this. Standard in the future, then we need to think about, you know.
We wouldn't wanna exclude the personnel there.
That's correct. That's what I'm getting at.
Provide.
That's what I'm getting at.
Right, exactly.
Right, okay.
So, so Ben, are you recommending that we try to not have any of the ICC five hundred storm shelter?
No, just the peer review.
Just the.
Just the peer review language. The rest of it, I think is, the rest of it, I think is prudent.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And, and correct, but the, it just in my opinion, again, my opinion, um, I think that that is. It's nowhere else in the code. You have to double up on design for anything else, right? And I, I just think it's something that we don't necessarily have to bear that cost of having a. Two architects design the structure. When the code's clear on the, on what it has to be, you know. It's not like there's some ambiguous language in the code that one architect may interpret one way and one another, but they probably.
So how, just how costly would just be meeting the ICC five hundred storm shelter rules or like?
It's a robust structure. Um, it's gonna have, there's also compliance, um. You have to have an emergency preparedness plan. You have to have studies done for, um, uh. Ground, water, ground, you know, um, the, the, uh, soil composition, you know, earthquake. Potential, you know, there's just all kinds of, um. Design, um, information that has to be collected before you can, you know. it's, it's not unsimilar to any other structure. It's just, this one is made to protect people in a storm, so it's, it's gonna have to be very robust.
But again, it still goes back to those buildings that are under those uses that you mentioned before.
Yes. Yeah, it, it's. If anyone wants to build a storm shelter in their building, if we, once we adopt this code, it will have to conform to ICC 500 as well.
What if they don't want to?
Then, then they don't have to, as long as it's not a fire station, police station, you know, any of those critical buildings. And it's not requiring anyone to build a storm shelter except those critical buildings.
So I think one of the concerns I'd have is, i- is it's not just new buildings. It would be like this building, right, that we're in right now?
No. No.
Okay.
No, new construction.
Only new.
Unless you change the use, you brought up the hospital. If USD 410 bought the old hospital and wanted to start conducting classes there, they would have to provide an ICC 500 storm shelter. Because that's a change of use for that building to one of those critical facilities.
Right. If somebody wanted to buy it and make those consolidate those rooms into apartments and, and do something like that, that that would not be required.
And it then excludes, it excludes K through 12 daycares. It's publicly funded K through 12 schools.
So really it's only public.
It's public buildings.
Essentially, yeah.
Critical.
So one of your other notes here, you have the, um, radio reception.
That's one that, uh, it's been an issue for a while. It's, again, it's based on the area we're in, um, the radio, I don't know if you heard earlier, my radio made a tone and that was telling me that I did not have signal. And that's the problem in all of Marion County inside buildings, we don't get signal very well. And that creates a problem for emergency responder communication. So the only real, um, solution to that is found in the fire code where, um, a building owner is required to install, uh, it's called a bidirectional antenna to increase that signal inside the building. Now, they're expensive and to ask every building owner that, uh, to, to provide one of those that's required by the code would couldn't do it.
And, uh, because it'd be most buildings around, around here.
Pretty much all buildings around here, including this building.
Yeah, esp- especially if it's a metal building or a brick building. I mean, there's, I've got firefighters at their places in their homes, mine included, that I don't get signal.
You know, we don't need to rehash the whole decision on radios, but, but there has been a tremendous amount of unintended consequences and costs with the decision that went along to go with the system that we're now using.
That's correct, but we can't.
Well, that's just how it is. Right.
So now we have to try to figure out what to do about the situation we're in. And what I've done.
That was a state or a, or a, or a county decision.
You know, it trickles down to a federal decision. You know, we had, we had to conform to P 25, um, radio, uh, capabilities. And, uh, the only way to do that is with either eight or 900 megahertz frequencies. And so, you know, and to, to say that it was a mistake to go to 800 megahertz, it, it seems like it was, but it was a federal mandate, you know, and so there was really nothing anybody could do. But it just seems unfortunate because when we were under UHF, it seems as though we had.
Well, what it comes down to again is the, is the challenge that, 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 uh, we all face often, you know, again, with this idea of unintended consequences, which it becomes an unfunded mandate.
Exactly right.
And unfunded mandates are the bane of any local government, I can tell you, because we're mandated to do things, but we're not given the resources to, to do it. And so it comes to come off the back of the taxpayers and that gets to be very frustrating.
And like I said, you know, there, there's, there's been plenty of finger pointing, myself included.
Sure.
Frustrated with the system.
I get it.
You look for people to blame, but really it boils down to that, that federal mandate.
So just, just again, so we're clear, let's, let's just use an example where you are fighting a fire in a, in a public building within the city limits of Hillsborough that hasn't, that the 800 service doesn't work in. Your other radio, or do you have?
We have an option.
You have an option?
We have an option. It's called ATAC 92D. It's a program, it's a frequency or channel on our radio that we can go to that doesn't repeat. It doesn't go to the tower and then back to the radio. It goes radio to radio. And that's very effective for communication from, from command to firefighter and firefighter to firefighter. On the fire ground, it's very effective, but when, while you're on ATAC 92D, then you don't hear other traffic. And that traffic is not recorded. Um, and so if there's a mayday or some other incident that you would, uh, later need to have a recording of, that wouldn't exist. And if, if a mayday may not get heard by dispatch, because if, in, in the commotion of the fire ground, sometimes you're counting on dispatch to be able to pick up a, a call when command or other ground personnel doesn't pick it up. And so it's, it's kind of a catch 22. You know, yes, it's, it's a better frequency for us to use on the fire ground, but then we lose that, that outside help, basically, and that recording.
So, you know, how do we, uh, how do we address, you know, the $15,000 requirement? I mean, is this going to be again, for any new structures or?
The, the fire code affects new and existing structures.
So are you suggesting that with this code that we're gonna go to every building?
I am not suggesting, I'm suggesting we don't do that.
Okay, got it. Okay. I'm sorry. Got it. Okay. Okay, I, I apologize. I know.
Well.
I misunderstood.
Well, it's, I'm, I'm kind of voicing my frustration because that's really where we're at, you know, in order to have communication, that, that's, that's, uh, that's prudent for firefighting and EMS and law enforcement. Um, that's really what needs to happen since we don't have the coverage that we need. But we can't ask every business in Hillsborough to come up with a $15,000 signal boosting device. Um, that, that just doesn't make sense. So what I've, what I've done, I've created my own policy to where, um, for, uh, commercial new construction. I include in there, when they request a permit, I include with the information that I give them about how to, what it takes to get a commercial permit, that, uh, I am going to require a bidirectional antenna if needed. And so what that does is it alerts them upfront to include that in their budget. But then I wait till construction is complete and furniture is in there and the phones are working and all that. Anything that may cause radio interference or radio disturbance, and then I go in and I test. I test for the radio signal. If the radio signal is good, then they don't need it. But if the radio signal is not good, then they're prepared to go ahead and put that in. And that it happened, it like, the first time I, um, made that requirement was with the table welcome. And we waited until the construction was done and, and J, Jesse Ebert and I went in because we have two different radios. And we tested every nook and cranny and found that we had signal, uh, at least, uh, 45 RSSI, which is that what the code will require, it's a decibel, but it translates to about 10 RSSI. And we had 45 RSSI almost everywhere in that building, much to my surprise. And I, I think the reason for it is the antenna, we have one antenna in Marion County and it's in Alney. And that building has a lot of windows facing the only direction. And I'm, I'm convinced that's why the signal there was, was good. You know, but there's been others that I've tested and it's, and it's not good. You know, when, uh, when, when they were building the fine art center, Jesse and I went in there, this is when they were talking about introducing these radios. We found all kinds of places in there where we couldn't get signal, inside the high school, inside the elementary school. There's lots of places where we don't get signal. Again, you know, for firefighting, we can use ATAC 92D. But there have been times when I've been in a store and come walking out of the store and started hearing in fire engines rolling down the road because I missed the call because I was in the store and didn't hear the tone. You know, and not that I'm that critical, you know, but I mean, that happens, that hack, that could happen to any number of firefighters at any given time. So that's just another piece of the puzzle.
Yeah, who needs the chief at a fire?
He's getting away. So what I'm recommending is that we just kind of continue on with that kind of program. Alert the new construction, uh, um, um, commercial new construction builders and owners that, that, that it will be required in their project if I don't get signal. And the one that's pending right now is the annex at Countryside Feed. And I let them know right up front and I've done some testing there. And so far the testing has proved that they're probably gonna have to have one installed. But I, again, I'll wait till everything's finished and go in there and I'll go in there with someone else to use and get two radios and do the proper testing. And like, and likewise with the EMS building, they've been alerted to the, uh, I, they'll, they'll probably put one in anywhere. Really, I would think.
Yeah, it would improve their.
Yeah.
From a practical standpoint, when you're dealing with an expenditure of this kind, I would always recommend you have two, even though you, you want to anyway, I mean, you just, it's just a good idea.
Yeah, to test it with two radios.
Right.
Yeah.
Two, at least.
So how, like, one, one of these repeaters, how much space can it do in a building?
Uh, it all depends on what you get, you know, they, they come in a multitude of different, um, wattages and capabilities. And it's based on how much you need to cover and some places may need to. Or more. I don't have enough experience to answer that question because we haven't had to install one yet. And we've yet to have one installed.
So the real solution though is to have more 800 megahertz towers in the county. I mean, that would be.
That would be, that's what, that's what, that's what others in the state have done is added more towers.
Right. Had a million dollars a pop. It's not.
They're over a million dollars.
Yeah.
Only a million?
Only a million.
Oh, oh. Well, that's different. If it was just a million.
Yeah.
Stuck around numbers.
You can't add to something that's already existing, man.
Well, they have to be located in the proper place. And if there's already something, there's already a tower there, you could, you know, rent space on that tower. That, that's a definitely an option. But then the, still the, the electronics that it takes to run it. That's the, the Marion County Fire Chiefs Association has been looking at this problem for, well, ever since we got these new radios. And we've been trying to come up with solutions and the experts that we bring in, they tell us that they would, sites are a million dollars. And so then we go to the commissioners and suggest that they put up more sites. They're a million dollars. And obviously, you know, that's right, something that they're prepared to do.
What else do we need to talk about here, Ben?
Well, just some of the, like the residential code, you know, I've mentioned here about the, the intermodal shipping containers. There's language in that in both the residential code and the building code, and that's kind of the direction we're already headed. Um, um, I've been, the, the building code gives me opportunity to, um, explore other methods of construction and other materials, you know, given that, that I can verify proper testing and, and other safety measures are met. So we've gone ahead with it and the, by adopting the updated code, it would give me a lot more, um, code language information as to how to inspect it and how to approve them. And I don't know if I mentioned or Matt mentioned that what's kind of driving this is ISO is coming in for an evaluation of the building department. They come in every few years and evaluate the building department. And by hanging on to the 2012 code, we will lose a considerable amount of points that would be available to us if we adopt the 2021 code.
Which is impactful to insurance rates.
It, yeah. Exactly right. The ISO rates, building departments and fire departments, so I get to get a lot of fun with ISO.
Know you pretty well.
Okay. Anything else, Ben, you want to?
That's about all I got.
Any questions for Ben? We peppered you with a few.
Well, and you know, again, I'm kind of looking for guidance on this radio situation. If you want me to keep going the way I'm going, I'm fine with that, but I don't know if that's, I don't know how we could write that into an ordinance.
Well, that would be a policy.
That would be a policy, I guess.
Policy for inspection, yeah.
There's that and there's always the, uh, there's always the, um, it's where I'm looking for, you know, our planning commission, their board of zoning.
Oh, yeah.
You can always, you can always do a variance.
Variance.
You know, potentially that's an option. Right. That's always out there, you know? Because, you know, not every solution is a, not everything is a nail and requires a hammer, so sometimes you need a drill. Okay. That cover it then, Ben, for today?
I think so. I mean, I think Matt, uh, we're, we, we would do well to decide on whether or not to adopt at the next council meeting.
Yeah, yeah, that would be the game plan with this is, uh, we'll talk with Andrew a little bit about how we're gonna structure this and, and go with kind of the recommendations we've got here. And then, uh, bring you guys an ordinance for approval so we can move forward with this. Um, you have the.
And it will include NEC, the National Electrical Code. And again, um, Jonah made some suggestions to me, which I will probably take his advice. But I'd need to see the document myself before I can determine whether or not we can do that.
So there may be a little bit of a change included in that with how that goes.
Right, there will be, and, and I can get you the information as soon as I get the book and, um, you can disseminate it out to the council.
Yep, we can do that. Uh, we have a meeting on the summer 7th and then, uh, your meeting with.
On the 10th.
10th, so, um, there would be a need for action there on the 7th. So that's, that's kind of how we'll play it. That works for everybody.
All right. And the administrator's report, Mr. Styles.
Okay, I got a handful of stuff here. Um, we met with Our Town Development Inc., which is Alan Boats and Richard Oster. Um, the mayor and I met with them, talked a little bit about some of our strategic planning goals. We've actually been talking with Boats for a while about some helping with some other things around town as far as moving forward on a few things, including the fire station and demolition of 128 South Main and some other, uh, issues. And so, uh, what we've kind of come up with is, since they're now doing this, this, uh, consulting thing is, I mean, we want to enter in an agreement with them to use their services through 22, um, what that looks like, we'll, we'll kind of have that fleshed out here for you in the next few meetings. So, uh, I think it's a really great opportunity. They have a lot of experience, um, and can help with some of our issues that are a little bit more uh, sticky, I guess, or a little more complicated, um, including housing. So tho- those are, those are some things we're looking at. Um, one of the things, I don't know if you want to.
Just to be clear, uh, Al Votes has sold his business, Al's completely out of the construction business. And, uh, in both he and Richard are retired, Richard's got a pretty impressive resume. He's in the past been the CEO of a billion dollar manufact- aerospace manufacturing company. So, uh, they've got some strong, uh, bona fides, if you, if you will, you know, that, uh, what we talked to them about in the, the way this came up is, is actually, we threw it out to Al. Matt and I did is, look, small towns like Hillsborough don't have a lot of engineering resources. We obviously rely on EVH for our utilities, our streets, our civil engineering. But there's a lot of other things that we need engineering help for when it comes to building things, when it comes to demolishing things, when it comes to, you know, housing and some of the critical developments that we're talking about. So, uh, we said, you know, cities like us could use some assistance, could use some expertise, but we can't afford it full time. And so we suggested that maybe they ought to consider, uh, getting a, putting a company, standing up an organization to do just that, and they did. And, uh, we, at this. And uh, we, at this point, we have the opportunity to be, I think, their first client. So I'm excited about that opportunity because both of these individuals have demonstrated track records and certainly I think. We, it doesn't need to be said, but I'll say it anyway that, you know, you can walk around Hillsborough and. And uh, not go be far from something that votes construction or votes Parga has been involved with in Hillsborough. And especially at Tabor, for example, and so, you know, these people, they know the community, they know what we're about and, you know, they have that expertise and. Uh, we did kind of, kind of dive into a pretty heavy into the housing discussion, you know. And I think they have the ability to help us marshal resources in that area as well, which makes them even more valuable in my opinion.
So we're looking forward to having some more conversation in depth with that and bringing you guys something to talk about and probably maybe bringing Al and Richard to. To talk with the council. I think that would be good. Uh, one twenty eight South Main, so we're working on getting that through the bankruptcy court finally. Hopefully we'll get that wrapped up. That that process just takes some time. We did get permission to enter the building and start doing the asbestos testing, which is gonna be required if we demolish it. Um, I gave you guys a copy of the, of the uh bid that we got from Vots. It's actually, they're using a subcontractor. To do this. Um, it is about thirty, thirty five hundred dollars more than it was originally because we were talking about. Doing it with uh Tabor to do the M J R building and they do their deconstruction, demolition. And uh, I think that they put that on hold. Hold for whatever reason, then so this includes a little bit more uh mobilization cost there. Um, if we get to that, you know, we're gonna have to do the, the asbestos testing anyway, regardless of whether we're not. Should we choose to finally now knock the building down? So we're gonna do the five hundred dollars on that and get that testing started. Um, and then we'll talk a little bit more about kind of how, how we do this if we want to move forward with it. Um, L K M dinner, we went, the mayor and I went to the dinner for L K M, uh, legislative dinners um last week. And so we had an opportunity to meet with our, uh, Stephen Owens, our representative, and so that was a good opportunity there and just kind of reiterate. Uh, what the, the league is doing and focusing on uh for this year and kind of the priorities that we have as a group. Um, you know, their, their policy statement focuses a lot on local control and the mayor spoke about that earlier. And uh, that, that is exactly what we're, we're laser focused on too. Uh, anytime the legislature's in session, we want to make sure that we retain our ability to. To act in what we think is the best interest for the community. So uh, it was good. It was good to uh do that relationship with. Uh, Representative Owens, and then we also have uh league or league day legislative day at the Capitol coming up in January. Um, and I know the mayor and I are gonna, Mr. Bay is gonna, or. Bye, excuse me, is gonna be going with us on that, but it's open to anybody who wants to, to come with us too. Can't remember the date off the top of my head, uh, twenty sixth, I think, of, of January. Um, and so we'll uh have a little bit more information for you on that if you want to come. Uh, come with us. We'll be happy to have it. More is better. Um. Court dates is so we've, we've appointed Joe Olman as the prosecutor and so we're actually looking to move the court dates in twenty two. We. We had to move them originally for Susan. Uh, and we want to get them on a Thursday. That's a better day for us and just works better for the schedule. And so they're working through that and uh Brad Jans is working with. Joe on that. Um, so hopefully we'll get that hammered out fairly soon. Uh, Gary Andrews retirement, that's coming up this Friday. We're gonna do that one at the golf course, not here. And that's a change from what we have been doing. Um, and so that'll be from four to six out at the golf course this Friday. Uh, it's important to note Gary won't be officially retired until January one. He's just got his vacation banked up and so he's taken off. He's gonna be gone. Um, so that's, you know, he'll, he'll probably actually come back and work a little bit in December to help us blow out the sprinkler systems. I think that's the one thing he's yet to, to give Avery instruction on, and so uh he'll come back and do that and then we'll. Wish him a Merry Christmas and a Bon Voyage. Um, we got the health insurance savings report there for you. We get this every month. You can kind of see how our, our uh. Freedom Claims Plan is performing this month. We saved, or we netted back two thousand two hundred and eighty two, or eighty eight dollars and eighty two cents. Um, the previous month, actually, we were a little bit low, uh, negative in that month. Um, so we, we drew down on our claims that month because we had an unusually high amount of uh prescription drug claims that month, so. Uh, otherwise the plan's performing pretty well. We've saved sixteen thousand three hundred and seventy nine dollars and eighty nine cents that would have otherwise went to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. That's in a bank account for us to use. Um, and so the, the plan continues to move forward and is doing pretty well. Uh, I want to remind everybody I'll be on vacation next week. Um. The day before Thanksgiving, so December first. Then I also had a couple other things to add uh today and tomorrow, actually, I'll be at the Grid X. It's uh, tabletop exercise for emergency management related to cybersecurity and electrical grid. It's K P P's putting it on. Uh, it's, it was a really interesting experiment. Uh, anytime you do a tabletop exercise, it's like the worst. Possible case scenario. Uh, and so the exercise we've been working on this morning, uh, before I got, I didn't get to go the whole day. I've had other things, but. Um, was a terrorist attack on the, the power grid uh that took out. You know, everything and they were attacking substations and then there were uh. Uh, package bombs that were sent to City Hall and the police station. And so literally everything that is awful that could happen, happen. Uh, entirely, utterly unlikely to ever happen in Hillsborough, but it's still a good exercise to. To walk through how you would handle something like that. Um, it just illustrates how unprepared we would be for something like that. Should it happen? Um, and so it's been a really, it's been an eye opening and kind of a fun experience um to do that and. We'll, we'll go back tomorrow and try again, and then I think they, they kind of recap you on what you could do better. And so the idea at the end of the day is that we improve our. Our preparedness plan for that thing. So uh, hopefully we never have a situation where eco terrorists try to blow up our grid. Uh, but you never know. I mean, it's weird, weird times right now. Um, K dot grant, we got notification today actually that we did not receive uh the grant funding we put in earlier this year for the Adam Street Improvement. Uh, they had eighty four applicants and fifty four, uh, requesting over fifty four million dollars, which is a little over double what they actually had, so. That, we did not get selected for that. It didn't end up being at the top of the list, but I will say that the. The federal infrastructure bill was signed uh today, I believe. And so there's a lot of moving pieces to that, and so there may be some more opportunity coming down the line for us on, on some other projects, so. Um, that is that. And then I also handed out a copy of the invite to our Christmas party. You're all welcome to come. Uh, we're gonna go bowling. It's gonna be exciting. Uh, so hopefully you can join us there on December eighth. And then I also wanted to let everybody know that we're probably gonna be looking at a special meeting. Uh, on the twenty eighth of December, we'll have to do the budget amendment. Uh, which will be at the December seventh meeting, but the way the calendar and publication schedule strikes out, we won't have quite enough time if we go to the next regular meeting. Uh, and so we may have to look at doing at least a little quick meeting on the twenty eighth to approve that budget amendment, hopefully. Not everybody will be out of town. Hopefully we'll have people here to, to do that, but. Um, more information is when we, we'll get to that. We'll actually talk about the budget amendment at the next meeting, so. That is everything I had, sir.
Um, do you want to say anything about uh what we were involved with at the school today?
Oh, yeah, that was a good point, sir. Um, so we are doing the uh senior class projects. They. Mr. Canole has moved those to the fall this year. Last year we did them, I think, in, in the springtime and we talked about them here. Um, and so today the mayor and I and Karen Doyle and Max Heinrichs, the superintendent. And Clint Corby for a little bit of it, uh, got to hear the first, first round of presentations there and there were some really interesting ones in the mix and. Uh, we're gonna also have some more presentations on Friday morning, so. Hopefully what we'll get to is what we've talked to Mr. Canole about is uh having some of them come and present to you guys. Uh, we did budget in a little bit of money to help with some of these projects or to actually do some of these projects in, in the twenty two budget and so. Uh, we have an opportunity to actually fund some of them and then see kind of where they go. Uh, but yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of great projects today. There was. Stuff about the, the ponds over at the museum and there was uh something at the golf course and trail improvements and what was the last one? Think of it.
Dog, dog park.
Yeah, dog park. So a lot of, a lot of cool ideas and I know that there's some, some, some cool ideas in the next group too, so. We'll get to hear from them. It's always great when you get the seniors involved. I think this group is probably the best, well, you said that was probably the best.
Every year they get better, but this, and then this is no exception. This year is better than previous year, so. The cost of these projects, just to give you an idea, ranged anywhere from fourteen thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars. So were there, were the estimated costs of these projects, so.
Some big swings in there.
Yeah. But it was good and it, and you know, it's good to see the engagement that, that the youth have in, in it. And I mean, they just didn't sit there in the classroom and come up with the stuff. They actually got out, met with people, got on site, looked around. Talked to people, did some, did some legwork and so, you know, that's the part that, and then the idea of putting the. Numbers together, you know, the first year that we did it, there was a lot of great ideas, but nobody had any clue about what it was gonna cost to do any of it. And uh, you know, I said, that's probably one of the most key pieces of this, you know. You gotta know how much you're asking for. So it was good. Yeah. Okay, anything, any questions for Mr. Styles? Okay, we'll now move into our second public comment section. Do we have uh? Doesn't look like we have anybody from the public online. No extras have joined us. Anybody care to make a comment? Okay, council comments. Councilman Gary? Councilman McCarty? Councilman Owen?
I had a, a patron share with me some concerns about the museum, so. I don't know what depth I want to go into that with at this, at this point in this meeting, but just. That there's some sense of some things happening that they were concerned about that the.
I would say.
It'll be House Museum.
That uh, Mr. Styles and I had probably met with those.
Probably have met with them.
With them, so.
Share that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you. Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Dr. Here's, okay. Any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.